I am Vice Chair Kyoni Shizuma, or David Shizuma. Call this meeting in order. Um, I believe I'm supposed to read the rules of speaking, so I'll go over that real quick. To ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines apply. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box, or raise their hand using the raise hand function on the online Zoom platform, which is indicated by a hand. If accessing the meeting using your phone, and you have a comment, indicate this by pressing the symbols star three. This will show the moderator that the person calling from that number wishes to speak. To mute or unmute your phone, press six. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin comments and address those comments to the chair. Please preface your comments by identifying yourself and your affiliation if any. All official reports, comments, and concerns shall be three minutes or less. To help all attendees opportunity, to help all attendees the opportunity to hear presentations and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you're recognized, unmute yourself and make your comments. The board may act on any agenda item as required by State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote of this board, so that'd be 12. We have a 17-member board? So we would need 12 to add item to the agenda if it's already on the agenda. Okay, so we'll get started. First is the filling of vacancies on the board, so we have four vacancies now. Subdistrict 2, 8, 13, and 14. There is a map included in the agenda. We have, and we have one here, so if anybody is interested. Subdistrict 2, Winona Maw area. Subdistrict 8. Can't make out where 8 really is. Up here, pretty much. Okay. Yeah. Well, 8, 13, and 14. Is there anybody wishing to, or interested in joining us on the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. We do have forum, I believe. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we can vote on things, but only things on the agenda. Okay, first up, we have the City, State, Community Monthly Reports and Discussions, so three minutes each. HFD. Must be online. No? Oh. Holidays. HPD. Same? These right there, yeah? Marine Corps is soy. I know that's here in the room.
Hi, good evening, Vice Chair, community, board members. We're back. I missed you all. I had a couple of positive updates that I wanted to share, and I know that we have some of our Christmas Parade Committee here. We received the request for the Marfo Pac Band to participate in the parade, and I just got confirmation today that they've received it, and it's all approved, and so they're going to be participating in the parade. Yay! We're gonna have the Marfo Pac Band and the commander not there together. A couple of other updates. We, we need to get his autograph, and congratulations, Chair. That was a great episode. Family Feud, for nobody who knows. So, sorry. I regress. So we have been awarded Heile from Pai Pai, who you know is a partner with the Marine Corps Base, with the signing of the MOU to the restoration of Neupia Pond. Received a grant from the, oh my gosh, I'm having a brain fart. We received a grant to pursue further restoration of Neupia Pond. We planned a work day on October the 4th, and unfortunately had to cancel it. But we are happy to announce that we are still moving forward with restoration, and having this extra funding is going to really help to move things along with a focus on the water quality. And we want to be looking at the first culvert that's closest to the H3. You know, water quality, as you folks all know, is of high priority, and anything that can help to assist the pond, Neupia, and fish restoration, and the pond restoration, and Kanihohe Bay, and the flow of water, we want to really encourage that. Let's see. I think that's all I have for right now. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Sakamoto?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. Hi, Kristi, welcome back. I'm very happy you're back. I just want to know if you can give an update on the 250-year anniversary of the Marine Corps, how that went, if it did? And how about Toys for Tots? I believe it's time for Christmas, and if folks would share, participate with them?
I can follow up with the Toys for Tots, the Toys for Tots. I'm not connected with them on the Marine Corps Base currently. For the 250th, we did celebrate the 250th. We did continue to have our yearly birthday, and again commemorating the 250th. It did pursue, we didn't have as many community members able to participate due to the unfortunate lapse in appropriations. But other things are still moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Marine Corps Base? Any online? Nope. All right, thank you very much. So we want to recognize HPD. I believe they just walked in the room. If you guys want to go ahead and give your report?
Good evening, board and members of the audience. I'm Lieutenant Sanford Yu. I'm one of your lieutenants for the District Night Watch. This is Corporal Tenida. He's a longtime officer in this area. Presenting you the stats for October. For October, motor vehicle theft was unchanged from one. Burglaries increased from one to three. Regular thefts decreased from 11 to 10. Motor vehicle break-ins increased from one to seven. And robbery remained the same at one. Be willing to answer any questions at this time. Yes, Donald?
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant. You know, last month, October, I brought up the issue about calling 911 on October 12 at 12:52 a.m. About speeding loud vehicles coming H3, turning around by exit 11 by Kamia Highway. And I want to get a follow-up later on, and one thing, other thing is, if the emergency system goes down, towers, everything, do you folks have Starlink to use to communicate to the officers, to their tablet and cell phones?
We have a backup system, but we do not use Starlink.
Okay, and then about the October 12, if I can get a response later, if you can?
Yeah, it's gonna be difficult for me to look that up. I know you call frequently, but when you call, and the time it takes the officer to get to the area, those vehicles are usually gone. But we haven't been doing as much enforcement on the H3 as we'd like. But hopefully we'll start up again.
Yeah, I hope you can work with the other districts too on the other side. They have a lot of problems there too. Thank you.
Any other questions for HPD?
Yes, I saw recently on a newscast about the implementation of a 30-minute awareness program that's being implemented with HPD with driver safety. Could you expound on that at all?
That is news to me, though. I will have to follow up, and I'll email you. But what we do every night is we do what is called a Take 30 Traffic Enforcement Program. So each officer, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, each officer does 30 minutes of pure traffic enforcement to reduce collisions and fatalities on the road.
Any other questions for HPD?
Was that what you heard of, though?
All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. Next month, or January? Okay, Winona Community College? Nobody online, yeah? Okay, moving right along. Cities, oh no, we just did that. Board reefs, Kinaole Estate. Believe they're gonna present Ryan Ringgit. You have 10 minutes.
Correct. Ethan, if you're online, I do have a PowerPoint presentation.
Chair.
Yes.
Sakamoto, you know, since I'm legally blank, could the PowerPoint be more descriptive if this? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to describe the images as best I can. Mahalo. All right, and then, yeah, can you go full screen, Ethan? If not, maybe try the PDF.
Here, click that button right there. Oh, that's.
Oh, you can like zoom in like that, okay. All right, I'll try that then. All right, Mahalo. Okay. Kakko, my name is Ryan Ringgit.
Sorry, this is Ethan. Can you see the green?
Yeah, Ethan, it's good. So I'll just say next slide and just scroll down. But yeah, she zoomed in, so I think it's okay. So yeah, I'm, uh, my name is Ryan Ringgit. I'm a planner with G70. Here today with my colleague Tracy Camuso, who's also a planner with G70, and Tom and Beth Slavens from Kinaole Estate. So I'm here today to talk about our project, Kinaole Estate. So next slide? Ethan, can you scroll down to the next slide?
Can you do it? Ask you to click on the slide on the left or right.
Okay, Ethan, can you click on the slides on the left side? Great, there we go. All right, so Kinaole Estate is an existing residential senior care home provider located on William Henry Road in Kanihohe. They provide senior housing, personalized supportive services, memory care, expanded care, and adult healthcare. And they've been providing these services since 2003. Currently, they serve 22 residents, and they are operating with State of Way, Department of Health, Adult Residential Care Home, Type 2, 8 resident, expanded care licenses. So on the slide, there's an image of one of Kinaole Estate's residents. Next slide? All right, so Kinaole Estate is located on two parcels off of William Henry Road, with a combined project area of one acre. So those parcels are tax map key 45012079 and 45012080. And on screen is a map showing the two parcels, which are adjoining parcels with a long kind of skinny stem from William Henry Road to the parcels. And on the site, there's four existing dwellings. Next slide? So both parcels have state land use district, urban district, and city and county of Honolulu are 7.5 residential district zoning. And on the slide is an image of both parcels with the underlying R7.5 zoning. Next slide? So this is our, our current iteration of our proposed site plan, and it hasn't been finalized yet. So basically, what you're seeing is we have William Henry Road on the right, and we have a driveway that leads to four dwellings with parking on either side of those dwellings. So we have parking kind of on the street side and also behind the dwellings. So physically, the current site plan looks almost the same as the site plan. We're now looking at expanding to dwellings. There's gonna be some minor improvements to improve driveway access from William Henry Road. So we're proposing a slight enlargement in order for vehicles to be able to turn into the driveway and wait if there's any vehicles that are trying to exit from the dwellings to William Henry Road. So they can do that off the street. That's something we're proposing. The project's main purpose is to consolidate the currently separate care homes on the site into one. So it's not so much a physical change as it is a paper one. So in order to do that, we're developing a conditional use permit major application from the city and county of Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting. And that's for the purpose of just consolidating these residential senior care homes. And on screen is a, one of the dwellings. Two-story dwelling, green, green roof, tiles surrounded by landscaping with steps leading up to the dwelling and a view of the whole house in the background. Next slide? So this slide is depicting a timeline of our permit application. So we are currently at the Neighborhood Board Meeting stage, so in November 2025. We're gonna take input from this Neighborhood Board Meeting to develop our conditional use permit application. And then we're anticipating submitting that conditional use permit application to the city in January of 6. Once the city accepts our permit application, they will organize a public hearing with support from us, and we're anticipating that to happen in March of 2026. And DPP, or the city, will make a final decision on our CU application. We're anticipating that to happen in April of 2026. Next slide? All right, that's it. Thank you so much, and if anyone has any questions?
All right, questions from the board? Just reminder, because we haven't done it so far, recognize, identify yourself before you ask your question, though, but Kim, let's see your hand go up first.
Hi, Kim Tomy. Could you tell me the road access, is it not wide enough for two vehicles?
So currently, the driveway is one vehicle in or out. What we're proposing is increasing or widening the first part of it, or for there to be two vehicles.
What about an ambulance? What would happen if an ambulance, would you have to go all the way out the other side, or turn around, or how does that work?
I think, and so the, there is, emergency services have been able to access the facility, and they go in and they come out. I think at the end, there is space for them to be able to turn around and exit as well.
But two cars couldn't pass on the same road?
Not as the driveway is currently.
But it would be after you modify it?
After we modify it, yeah, a vehicle could enter, wait for that other vehicle to exit, and then also enter the driveway.
Okay. So not, they can't drive at the same time. One has to pull over?
Well, one will stay on the side while the other one exits, and then they'll.
Got it, thank you.
Not wide enough for two cars at the same time?
But it will be off William Henry Road.
Other questions? Saw their hands. Mo?
Mo Radke. There's, you said there's four dwellings on Kinaole Estate?
Yeah, on both of those parcels, so, and so there's two parcels.
Let me get, let me get to my question. Are all four of those presently under this cup?
Yes, all four of those will be under this cup application.
Are they in that situation now?
What do you mean?
Is this a way to consolidate those four dwellings and increase the size of Kinaole Estates?
No, so currently, there's four dwellings, and they're operating separately. So I guess when I say consolidate, they're gonna be treated as one instead of separate entities. So right now, they're, they're operating separately.
Correct.
And the idea is they're gonna consolidate it under one.
And under, I get that. That consolidation, and then what's gonna happen with each of those individual four dwellings? Will it all remain a senior care facility?
They will all remain a senior care facility, so it shouldn't change the services provided and that too much. It's just, right now, they're, they're separate, and we're trying to make them one.
The reason I'm asking this question is I, I believe this is the property that they've, they've tried to do a couple of different things on, not specifically elderly care.
Okay.
And if, and if. What's the address?
There's a couple. It's 4.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I was, you're right, I was thinking about Cobb Adams. Okay, I'm sorry. And I appreciate the clarification. I have no more questions.
I have a question, but.
No, go ahead.
Neil Flytel, can, can you go back to the ground plan slide? This, it shows the four buildings and the proposed, and the driveway existing.
Sure, can you look to the state plan?
Maybe that would help.
Yeah.
We had a handout of that. So if there's four buildings in the one square that is the estate, and the driveway's kind of splitting down the middle somewhere, and you're gonna widen that, that is, that's what I'm hearing, right? But those, right?
Yes, we're gonna widen that first portion that meets William Henry Road.
Okay.
Oh, just at the beginning.
I know, Brian, here. So essentially, the project is gonna be the same. There's not gonna be more dwellings, there's not gonna be more people. It's essentially, they're gonna open up the driveway just as you come off, so that there's no cars that are waiting there. All the way going through to the dwellings, nothing's changing. Making sure that we kind of have a place to hang out if, you know, there are cars, but no one drives. There's not, you know, a high operation. There'll be no more additional people. It's really this process of why we're here for you to get your questions and comments is we have been asked to put these dwellings into one. So we've been operating the way we've been operating for 20 years. It's just the city says, you need this.
Okay, just to clarify what Mo, Chairman Mo, said. The four, the four different senior care facilities are operating as senior care facilities right now. But, and they have separate permits, separate management structures, whatever, and you're gonna make it one. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just, so Chair Shizuma, so just to make sure I'm clear, exactly the last part of that. The, the buildings aren't changing either. There's no actual, okay, it's still staying.
They'll stay.
Physically staying the same, okay, thank you. I'll let Donald speak, because he's been patient on this one, so go ahead, Donald.
Wait, thank you, David. Donald Sakamoto, I'm familiar with your establishment. My auntie was there for some years as a senior and going through care over there. I am familiar with the driveway. What is the projected timeline to probably have that construction? What do you think? It's a minimum, how long?
We have to get through this permit first. That's really the only proposed change, and that will be a requirement by the city. So once we get the permit, we will just do it immediately. There's not any other large development that has to occur for that driveway, so it's kind of just that opening of that there.
And then one last question, did you let the neighbors know? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, that's good.
Yeah, let's do one or two more, and then, go ahead, Laura.
So I'm wondering, what was the original reason for having each building sort of like separate? And then now you're consolidating it. Is there pros and cons to either?
Not, not fully sure what the reasons were for back in that day, but they're part of the opportunity here, as they're operating separately, or creating a solid eight. There's gonna be some enhanced operations and that kind of thing.
Service and.
Yeah, it's entities, you know, staff can go. It's really, the operations is the same.
Makes sense, okay, thank you.
Kim?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Tracy Camuso. I'm a planner with G70. Ryan just introduced her.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions online, though? No? Okay, I think we're good, thank you very much.
Two online.
Oh, two online. Sure, we'll go with that phone number. Last eight numbers are 88. You can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, perfect. I'm so sorry. My name is Kawi Hugo, and my dad, I'm just here to say some things about Kinaole. My dad has been a resident at Kinaole Estates for almost two years now, and we feel so incredibly fortunate to have found this little hidden gem there. You know, gosh, making the decision to place a loved one in assisted living is probably one of the most difficult and emotional choices the family can ever face. And it was no different for my family. My dad has Dachshund dementia, and with my husband and I having to work full-time, it was, you know, no longer safe to leave him at home for any length of time. So, you know, we needed to find a place where he could receive 24-hour care, and, you know, our long search began. You know, we visited many, many assisted living facilities on this island, and some were really big and impressive with lots of bells and whistles and amenities, but they were clearly very understaffed, and others were nice, but they just didn't, you know, feel right. And, you know, we took about four months to find.
Excuse me, sorry.
The more discouraged.
Excuse me, okay, first, can you identify yourself first? What is your name?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I did in the beginning. Kawi Hugo.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just in the, you know, to stay on track. Could you, if you have a question or a comment, could you go ahead and?
I'm so sorry, sir, I can barely hear you. I was just here to give testimony, actually, on behalf of Kinaole and our experience on it. I don't really have a question.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
I mean.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I think we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna move on, thank you. Move on to Justin.
Hi, this is Jocelyn Naki. You know, I pretty much had the same thing in mind with the previous caller, and I just wanted to go ahead and let the community know, the board know, and the guests that are here this evening, that Kinaole has really been a godsend for me, my family, and my 96-year-old mother. So as they're looking to do what they need to do for their property, you know, I hope that we all keep in mind that the value that they add to our community is very, very important. And I'll leave it at that. I know that you have other important businesses to get on to. So thank you for giving that, that time to talk about this.
No, thank you for making the comment. Appreciate it to both callers. Last one, Sean. Sean, go ahead.
Oh yeah, hi, this is, this is Sean O'Connor, and I had a comment and then a question. The comment would be, it seems that this consolidation is being done because of the changes to, under Bill 64, to group living facilities, in that these four cannot operate so close together. And so the consolidation, it would seem, needs to be made so that they can continue to operate under the new land use ordinances. The question I would have for the folks there, for Kinaole, is would you accept a deed restriction as part of the cup to ensure that these four independent locations will continue to be used for kapuna living?
I'm not, do not know how to.
Yeah.
That's kind of put you in the spot. I mean, we're happy to talk more about that, but I think right now. That's kind of put you in the spot. I mean, we were happy to talk more about that, but I think right now to be able to say yes, we could do that. It's a little premature. Um, but yeah, in terms of the, I just want to address the L U O if you don't mind. With the new rules, we are aware of all the provisions. That's not only why we're here. The the conditional use permit for a group living facility has always been a requirement. It's just that the city has asked us to use this permit as a vehicle instead of the three different licenses. So it's, nothing is changing. We're going through the paperwork and the motions that we have to for the city, the land use ordinance. Chucking the box and these guys are going to continue providing good services to the community.
Thank you. I I believe.
Are you a representative of G70 or Kinaole?
Um, we are with G70 and then we have Kinaole here. So we're representing them in this neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah.
Did you feel like you wanted to chime in on that or just something to consider?
Could I ask a follow-up question?
Well, so so just to clarify.
Okay. Can I take this back?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm assuming the chair duties right now. So before this turns into a, uh, what's going to happen in January when you do a community hearing? We're not going to do this right now, but you brought up a really good question about these four different locations. And are they going to be used for the same thing in perpetuity? And I think that was a good question. That's something you should definitely consider and make sure that you bring up at the at the the community advisement during the cup meeting. That's you can probably hear my concern about Cobb Adams of having four or five different entities in a very close location. If you're going to speak, you're going to have to go to the microphone.
We we will definitely take that down and and include that information in our public hearing.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, and, uh, what was his name online? Sean, good job. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, let's.
No problem.
They didn't speak. Tom Slavens? I I didn't hear what you said, so. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate your time. I I'm sorry. I started on the Cobb Adams thing and it took us down this road. So you call a mic.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, next we have a proposed AT&amp;T telecommunications facility at Castle High School. Ashley?
Hi, my name is Bryce Novak from Centerline. I'm filling in for Ashley tonight.
Okay, do it.
All right. Let me share my screen. I apologize. I could not be there tonight. I got bought downtown. Let me see. All right, so the name of the AT&amp;T, the whole reason for this proposed cell tower, it's actually at Bayview Golf Course. But the 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 search ring was centered around a couple of sites. Uh, uh, east and west of Castle High School are both overloaded from the amount of traffic they're getting. Primarily because of students and then, uh, parents outside of school, usually high schools like that draw.
Are you going to share a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, I apologize. I thought I was sharing. Let me jump back.
Yeah, you might want to get it up on your screen and then click share. Because right now you're sharing the the WebEx screen.
Oh, okay. Window. Here we go. Sorry about that. Can you see it now?
It's coming up. Yes.
All right.
Now we have project location.
That's correct. That's the Bayview Golf Course and where the proposed tower is located is on the front side there uh, with the orange dot in the parking lot. And the area that we're is on the backside of the trees, kind of where the the current electrical power EV chargers are located. In the grass area outside of the Hiko easement. Um, the 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 discussion went around that is to try and blend the tower in with the existing uh, electrical poles to make it, you know, kind of fit in with the uh, without standing out too much, you know, the trees and the electrical poles will help disguise the tower itself. So that's kind of like a enlarged site plan area. And then here's a zoom in of the lease area. Um, it's about 29 feet by 12 is the AT&amp;T area and that's the overhead of the proposed tower. It's a monopole. It's a proposed steel monopole. And then the antennas with the mounts would be at the very top at the 100-foot rad. And you can see they're pointed in three different directions, directly south. Um, uh, kind of like northwest and then east. And right now we're just in the preliminary stages of designing. We would submit for, uh, I believe it's a minor CUP and then the SMA because the golf course is in the SMA. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have at this point.
Is this strictly an AT&amp;T tower?
It will be open to co-location. All all the it's own going to be owned by AT&amp;T. But it will be available for co-location to any other carrier like T-Mobile or Verizon. Sometimes AT&amp;T goes on their towers. Sometimes they go on theirs, you know, but they would. Go ahead.
Got it. I got it. That was the answer to my question. The next question is, if you lease out extra space, and I know this happens on other poles uh, or towers throughout Oahu, how many can you put on there before it starts affecting neighbors? In terms of emission?
Oh, emission, each is separate. So, uh, AT&amp;T would be on the top and each co-locator would go underneath them. Uh, all of them are with, usually EME is emitted by the antennas. And usually, um, something like this would be totally within FCC guidelines. And, uh, EME reports required by the city county of Honolulu. And I can make it a condition to come back and share that with you once we.
Really? Excellent.
We can provide your copy. It just shows, it's a prediction that shows, you know, how that requires AT&amp;T to keep, you know, what it looks like.
It's for every tower that goes, for every tower that goes up in Kanihoe, I've been asking the same question. How many, how many, uh, different leases can be up there? I know if one leasie is up there, then they have to fall within FCC requirements. But if there are five on one tower, there's five times, you know, one times five on that tower. That's the question I've been asking and trying to get an answer to, and I can't seem to get an answer from anyone, which starting to scare me.
Well, it it, yeah, they they, it's the EME that comes off the tower. Most of the time when we run into EME is on rooftops. Because, uh, where the EME exceeds health standards is directly in front of the antennas. And that for about 10, 15 feet. But that's sitting directly. These antennas are 100 feet up. So there's virtually no EME at ground level even, you know, up to, you know. But it's when you're exactly facing like antenna that first 10 feet. And that's what those reports would show. They would, you'd see kind of like a prediction showing the EME coming off the antenna. And then it dissipates into, you know, about 10 feet away from the antenna to within the, you know, uh, human exposure levels.
I've I've seen those and I've seen them for one, not for five.
Well, I'm hap- I I'm happy to email it over and then come back in January when this moves along.
That would be awesome.
Yes, so.
Yeah, I'm willing to learn.
Yeah, and then T-Mobile or Verizon would just lease additional ground space and all of it's going to the.
Hey, any other questions? Uh, Mr. Dale?
Chair, thank you, Dale Carsonson. Uh, just over two years ago, T-Mobile made a presentation to us also about an antenna going up on Saddle Road. Do you know and how would yours compare to that? It's difficult to see from the plans that you've shown.
T-Mobile, uh, proposed a new tower?
Yes, they did, um, just off of Saddle Road, uh, near Calahai High School. That was presented to this board.
Oh, okay. Uh, how many feet was that? This one is proposed at 100 feet.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Maybe if you can make a future presentation that can be addressed.
Okay, yes, yes, I can pull that from the records and then compare the two if that's okay.
Awesome. Well, it's going to be exciting in January. Thank you so much.
All right, I will, uh, come back with that data and present one more time.
Awesome. Any other questions? If you can come in person, if you're on island, that would be great.
I will be, yeah, uh, I will. Yeah, I'm on island now. I just couldn't make it, but I will be there.
Super.
All right.
Appreciate your appreciate your brief.
No problem. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Uh, next is the 2026 sewer fee changes and the cares program. Uh, we were going to get a brief and I took the brief and I stuck it into the folder that we use to schedule agenda briefs and I never went back to them and said, well, you're scheduled for this month. So we scheduled them, but we never let them know that they were on the schedule. So they're not here for this brief. So, um, my apologies. And I wanted to state that on the minute. So somebody at Hiko or it wasn't Hiko. Yeah, somebody at EMS doesn't get yelled at because of me. And now that it's duly put into the minutes, uh, resident community concerns. There was a request for feasibility study to install a crosswalk at Luluku and. Was there anyone to talk about that?
I, Kim told me, I I spoke to the resident who brought that up. And she clarified that the crosswalk would be for the Eva side of the roundabout on Apapani. Just giving you more information, but she's not here to speak about it. She she did say that she'd witnessed several near call, close calls.
Uh, who's on our transportation committee?
Sakamoto and that.
I'm sorry?
Transportation.
Yeah.
Sakamoto and that.
Do you think you could, uh, reach out to, uh, D O T? Actually, this case it's DTS.
Yeah, my favorite person.
Yeah, awesome.
Roger Martin.
Mahalo. Uh, next is the rotting mangrove vegetation concerns and mitigation. Lynn, Eileen? Sometimes it's delicious and sometimes it's not. Okay.
My name's Lynn Rosoff. Uh, I'm a member of the board of the second committee of the Windward Coalition. But I'm here as a Kanihoe resident. This is on Kanihoe Bay. Uh, where me and my neighbors, uh, to the left and to the right are suffering tremendously from a stench that we thought originally emanated from the sewage plant, but in fact emanated from the base with the mangrove root. Uh, and the base confirms this. Uh, and it's really had a really tremendous negatively impact on the quality of life and and on, I believe, the health of the residents for affected downwind of the base, uh, extending almost to the to the eye club. Now, uh, in terms of quality of life issues, what I mean by that is that people who are not going out, not letting their kids play outside as much. They're not going outside as much. They're staying indoors. They're turning on the air conditioners, which don't burn, uh, for either H2S or methane, which is produced by uh, anaerobic bacteria, which break down the organic material because the silt on top hasn't been removed by the contractor. And additional things, uh, some of them are buying, as we did, buying, uh, relatively expensive, uh, uh, air filters, but unfortunately even HEPA filters don't work on these two volatile gases. The the cheap carbon filters they have in front have a little bit of effect, but really minimal approval. And the people are also now reading about this are also concerned about other things, uh, not only aerosolized, uh, uh, VOCs, but are also concerned about toxins that release into the water. Uh, most importantly is the heavy metals that have been associated with malignancies, neurological disease, birth defects, and product diseases. Uh, in terms of actual health effects, we had the departments of health try to get involved. We haven't heard back from them with specifics. I don't know if they made any measurements. Uh, but we are self-camembled the community with a questionnaire, which we can provide for you. And, uh, a whole bunch of symptoms, new ones and symptoms that presumably attributable to this exposure include, uh, sleeplessness, headaches, particularly eye irritation, uh, redness, uh, even corneal beam in one case. And as expected, uh, people who have underlack lung diseases like asthma, bronchial lung diseases, they're having exacerbations with at least two uh, ER visits that mean the lungs are sore. Uh, and so we can definitely see that the real effects in the community. Uh, in terms of exceedance regulations, uh, only the base has not, uh, released any data on the level of H2S nor has the contractor. Uh, neither has the Department of Health yet. The only determination we have was from the fire department, which reported a reading on one day of uh, 0.4 parts per million, which is 400 parts per million. And a base officer commented that this, uh, did not require any action because it is very low. In fact, it is low if you look at it in the context of an acute exposure at work. However, what he apparently was not aware of, uh, is that with chronic environmental residential exposures, it is extremely high. Even the very lax Hawaiian standards, it exceeds that, uh, level by 17 times. Uh, and if you compare it to the levels, uh, approved by other states and the federal government, it's anywhere between 27 and 200 times above the approved, uh, level of H2S. This is a specific area of H2S. Uh, so there definitely are exceedances. Interestingly enough, uh, other phenomena have also been noted. Uh, one of the, one of the occupants noticed that his uh, copper leaders and gutters are turning from the color green to the color black, which is also a result of H2S. And spontaneously people, I guess older people who have silverware, were complaining of their silverware function, which is also an opposite effect of ambient H2S in the air. So we have our own cheap formats, uh, H2S monitors, uh, to suggest that H2S is probably a problem. So what we're.
So, so Lynn?
Yes.
Did the DOH say anything?
DOH, we wrote a very detailed letter to DOH. DOH has not given us given us any specific information.
And the base has said?
Said that we don't believe that there are any health effects from this and they will continue operations into forever.
Is is the contract to do the mangrove clearing public domain?
Uh, well, that's an interesting question. We tried to investigate that, but of course with the federal shutdown, uh, neither the Colonel of Base is very helpful. Everybody attempting to help us, uh, was not able to nail down the contract. His suspicion was, as mine is, that they signed a contract that had nothing to do with, there were no mitigations.
Right.
Point you're getting at.
So what would you like us to do?
So, uh, what I would like us to do is that we're going to write a letter, we have written a letter to the base and Department of Health specifically that they made, that they stopped removing the mangroves. Uh, it's a security issue and they could, and it's, both record is done already, perhaps more. Uh, that they perhaps with the interim, just cut them down until we see rather than extract them, which doesn't cause us any Department problems. Uh, and until the DOA, the Department of Health proves that there is no excesses in terms of H2S. We think another volatile gas that are clearly making people sick. We also asked the DOH, although they haven't responded yet, to canvass the neighborhood to see if there really is a problem as purported. And we have a questionnaire here, a detailed questionnaire, and we've brought in multiple things, headaches, as I mentioned before, that are clearly linked in the past reports related to this. So we would like them to get this data, arrest the extraction of mangroves until that data is analyzed. And then share it with the community. There's been no transparency here in terms of sharing what's going on. And also because the the neighbors who watched the extraction noticed that there was no mitigation going on. That means the top layer of silt, which is a cause of problems, not been removed. There's no erosion or increases anaerobic activity of the bacteria that's breaking down of a B.C. developed on the gases.
Hmm.
Uh, there's been no biological or chemical interventions. They do seem to have barriers, which I think are probably an attempt to prevent the, uh, heavy metals and other toxins. uh, heavy metals and other toxins featuring in the bay itself. I don't know how effective they are, but there are gaps and
Mangroves don't have heavy metal until they rot. Is that right?
Yes, correct. You have to extract the, it's only after the extraction of the mangrove that you have a problem.
Got it. Okay. And again, I, I hear what you're doing. What do you want us to do?
Well, when we submit again to the DOH and Clean Air Branch, uh, we'd like your support in in this effort.
Okay. We'd like to know the results of the DOH letter. Make sure we get a copy of that and, uh, the clean air report and we'll bring it to our environmental committee and see if a resolution is in order.
Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Uh, Vice Chair Shizumon, just, um, can you clarify where this mangrove removal is happening?
Well, it started first on the Nupia pond of the road that access from the H three to the base. Uh, and at that time we started to detect a smell. This smell, by the way, has been going on since, okay, so this is a chronic exposure. Uh, let me make, let me make that point. So and now it's on this side, on the, our Kanihoi side, uh, where most, it's a much bigger operation on this side. And let, let me tell you this, the only determination was made, as I mentioned, by the fire department, and that was much higher than allowable limits by any state agency. And, uh, uh, but I think it was misinterpreted by, I think the DOH largely deals with workplace problems and so that's a short-term exposure, can be very much higher as long as it's short-term. And they look at, when they talk about short-term, they're talking about 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Intervals of 10 minutes. So, uh, this exposure is really anywhere between 17 and 200 times the allowable.
Prolonged.
That one determination.
And prolonged.
And, and it's been going on since.
One, one more follow-up point is just, um, due to the location of that pond where everything is going on, I think it might be, uh, a good idea to talk to us, but also Kailua, because that's the other neighborhood board, because all the properties right there, right?
Yeah.
The other neighborhood right there.
Yeah, but, but with the prevailing winds, I think unfortunately are in Kailua's favor, not in Kanihoi's favor. Since most of the winds are, you know, a lot of the, the light bag, they, they drag it from, from the ponds to us and not back.
Do, do you have any idea if Nupia ponds are affected by silty runoff?
Yes, they were, they were absolutely rancid during April. I contacted the Department of Health and several legislators and nobody could figure out where exactly it was coming from, the stench, but then eventually it was figured out. So that's a problem. We're having a real problem with health stuff. Uh, in the beginning, everybody was just disgusted by the smell, but there are so many sad stories of people having illness right now, uh, and getting worse. Specifically eyes, people are losing vision. It's no small thing. Okay? And then additionally, the headaches and the children are being affected. There's one family of three kids. None of the kids are basically playing anymore. They're completely lethargic. The parents are freaking out. Uh, I hope some of them went online to look at this and will testify as well as how bad it really is. I'm sorry, I'm Eileen Hilton. I'm in the Windward Coalition. I'm the president.
Mahalo. Standing by. All right. Any other community concerns? Auntie Rocky?
Allah amai. Uh, it kind of might, first of all, before I open my mouth, I don't want to offend anybody, but we are presently working on the Nupia fish pond. And maybe the stench is coming because maybe that mangrove has been there a little bit too long. These are all invasive trees. It's been there in our bay for generations. Right now we have cleaned up the, um, mangroves from our, by the, um, Papai Ohiiya fish pond. The water flow is, uh, almost a hundred percent better. It's cleaning out the coral reefs over there. And it's, it has a great, better effect with the Kanihoi Bay. So of course if it's rotting, the rot smell is gonna come on. It's telling you it needs to be taken out. It needs to be cleaned. But the, actually for the health of the bay also. And if it's affecting these people and making them sick, then take it out because the silt there is gonna stay there until it's cleaned out. And again, I said it's invasive, it's not indigenous. And if there's any questions you can ask this, because presently we are working on the Nupia fish pond. And it took us 47 years to actually get a memorandum of understanding to get that fish pond moving. Mahalo.
Any other community concerns? Yes, please.
Uh, my name is Alexander Okomoro. I'm a resident of Kanihoi. I was born and raised here. Uh, my concern is, let's see, so on November 19th, uh, Hawa'i News Now, um, published saying that several Hawaii schools tested high levels of lead in campus water. And I just looked at the table, uh, Castle has been affected. So I wanted to bring awareness to that and ask, is there anything that the board or the community can do to address this?
Has anybody heard about this lead report? You said the 19th of November?
Yeah, November 19th, 2025. Hawa'i News Now.
Go ahead, Neil.
Uh, Neil Flantel. Um, yeah, the, the report was, um, said that what they were going to do was attempt to replace any fixtures where the lead content was seen as high. However, if it was in the pipes, that makes it a little bit more complicated in that they were gonna then have to replace whatever pipes. The first attempt is to try and replace the sink, for example, um, and the, the spigot or whatever. But they really don't know how bad the problem is in any of the locations. That's, that's as of yesterday. That was yesterday. Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah, we need more information. Thank you. And where was this report? The white one? Yeah. Was it on all the, all the schools?
Um, stop.
Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, hey, moving on. Any other community concerns? Moving on to elected officials. Representative Jill Takuta?
Good evening, everyone. I, um, sent over our November report, report, but I think a lot of that information on there now is moot now that the government is open, um, thankfully. Um, I guess really there is no real big updates unless, uh, other than today was, um, let me see here. Sorry. Where is it here? National Rural Health Day, so, uh, Representative Takuta and, um, her colleagues, um, celebrated and made testimony today on behalf of the importance of our rural community. Um, so, uh, she does have a press release on her page there and I will include it, that link in the chat if you want to check that out. Um, some of the things that happened, I guess, during the shutdown, um, while she was on, um, while here in Hawaii, um, she conducted, so I do apologize for not being able to attend last month's meeting. Uh, we actually held our, um, did, uh, town hall that evening, uh, with, where we had about 13,000 participants, um, online with us. Um, she met with healthcare leaders statewide focused on Medicaid cuts, which have already started to impact, um, those, a lot of our constituents here in Hawaii. Um, and she was on the ground supporting a lot of the food distributions happening within, uh, the district or the area. Um, but other than that, she has had a number of things happen since then. Uh, we do have press releases available on her website and I will link that in the chat. Um, if there's any other questions or anything, I was kind of interested, well, I really got to tune in as I had difficulty signing in in the beginning, but the discussion about the mangroves, I wanted to know if that is state property largely or is that federal? Because we can look into that as well to help support that. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Uh, next is?
Me.
Governor's representative, Diane?
Good evening. I'm Diana Ako. Um, I'm with the governors, well, I'm the governor's representative for this board. Uh, Governor Green has a monthly newsletter, Ke' A'Ho', and I've given a link over to the board where you can both read the latest edition and sign up. And then just, uh, I called a few items that might be of interest to this community. Um, at the Capitol Modern, there's a exhibit that runs through tomorrow, uh, Ka'au'lu Rising Together. It is original artwork focusing on climate change issues. Uh, there's a Capitol Modern free event. The public is invited to a free all ages evening of art and island roots and reggae music. The State Foundation of Culture and the Arts holds a monthly event on the third Friday, Friday of each month. There will be retail and food vendors selling items and November's event will be, um, tomorrow, Friday, November 21st from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Links to both of those events are given to the board for their posting. And compost reimbursement program, how about you? Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity Plant Industry Division is now taking applications for the compost reimbursement program for fiscal year 2026. That program may reimburse agricultural producers for the cost of purchasing compost. Deadline to apply, May 20, May 1st, 2026. For more information and to download the application forms, I've given the link to the board. That is my update.
Mahalo. Next.
Hey, Mayor Iki.
Uh, Rick Blanchardis, representative. Andy, are you here? Yes.
Good evening, Chair Ratke, board members, Kanihoi Neighborhood Board. I'm, uh, Mayor Blanchardis, representative, Andy Kawano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. Um, the mayor's November newsletter is posted at the city's website, www.honolulu.gov backslash mayor, backslash newsletter, for those that want to read it. As a reminder, uh, please join the city at the Friday, November 28th, Royal Hawaiian Band Kaliki Maka O'Ma'au Concert at the Neo Blaisdell Center at 7:00 PM. The concert is free and open to the public. Doors open at the Blaisdell Concert Hall at 6:00 PM. Seating is first come, first served. Concert features a lineup of acclaimed Hawaii artists, including Grammy nominated, 21-time Nahoku Hano Hano Award winner Henry Kopono, two-time Grammy nominee and multiple Nahoku Hano Hano Award recipient, Riothe Helm, Kamia Mia Schools Children's Chorus, uh, among other special guests that'll be there. The city will also illuminate Thomas Square Park for concertgoers to enjoy before and after the performance. Honolulu City Lights begins the following evening, November 29th, with the traditional tree lighting ceremony at Honolulu Hale, followed by the Public Workers Electric Light Parade down King Street. There were, uh, a number of, and I'm gonna go over the main ones from last time, uh, questions for the city, uh, that I needed to follow up on. Uh, the first one related to short-term rentals. Uh, board member, uh, highlighted ongoing illegal short-term rental activities in the Kanihoi area, particularly along Lilipuna and uh, Hano'ho' Circle, noting that while residents have repeatedly reported violations, enforcement has been challenging. So there are, uh, three questions. The first one was, what is the current enforcement staffing level? Uh, board member thought that there were perhaps four to five staff. Actually, there were resignations. So currently there are, uh, in the short-term rental branch, two FTE investigators and one planner. So they're down to three FTEs and they're currently hiring. So if anyone is interested, uh, to work in the enforcement staffing, uh, area at DPP for short-term rentals, they're hiring right now to fill vacancies. Uh, second question, how many violations have been issued in the greater Kanihoi area? Between October 22nd and the present, a total of 245 violations have been issued within the area spanning from Kailua to Kahalu'u. Uh, last question, how much transit accommodations tax has been collected? Specifically, what portion of the approximately $60 million Oahu TAT cited in the 2024 to 2025 budget recap is attributed to vacation rentals? Okay, so the $60 million is the, uh, non-rail portion for that fiscal year. Uh, we attempted to get the breakout of the $60 million related to short-term rentals, but we're gonna have to do more work because, uh, the files for transit accommodation tax and short-term rentals don't have, uh, a common, uh, field that we can, we can link up. So we're gonna have to, um, see if we can link it up by address. Uh, but that may not be totally correct because, uh, sometimes the address does not reflect, uh, the location of the property. It's, um, where the, where the owner has a, either a business base or a, uh, or it could be the owner's, um, you know, tax accountant or, or something like that. So we're gonna try to do that and see if we can get you some data. Um, but I, I, I can tell you, based on what I know, um, there are nearly 8,000 uh, registered businesses that pay TAT on Oahu. And, uh, with regard to, uh, the, uh, short-term rentals, we have nearly 2,000 registered short-term rental properties. Uh, but if anything's going on here in the Windward side, probably they're illegal. So they're, they're unregistered. So we'll, we'll check into that and, you know, they probably aren't paying TAT. Um, the next question, uh, was, could the Department of Transportation Services, uh, and state D O T conduct a safety survey and coordinate improvements for the dangerous intersections at Haiku Road and Kahupia Street near Kahikili Highway where two, two schools are located? Uh, this is DTS's response. So Transit Services says the concern regarding the intersections of Kahikili and Haiku Road are under H dot jurisdiction. So when the, when, when, um, uh, the state's here next time with the right representative, they can report on that. Uh, under the city's, uh, uh, area, under the Kanihoi Complete Streets Project, measures are being proposed to demarcate on-street parking and bike lanes and curb extensions on both Haiku Road and Kahuhipa Street between Kahikili and Kamia Mia highways. A, um, a through travel lane with, will be retained in both directions. And the proposed measures will help to encourage speed compliance by narrowing, narrowing the travel lanes. So more to come on that. Uh, next question, would it be possible to install raised sidewalks on Kahuhipa Street at key points like the intersection near City Mill and the intersection with Kahikili Highway to slow traffic and improve safety? Uh, DTS's response, raised sidewalks are typically installed at inter, intersections which do not have any traffic controls to regulate traffic, which is not the case at the intersections of Kahuhipa Street and Kahikili Highway and the intersection near City Mill, which is Alaloa Street. Operational issues may be of concern if raised sidewalks are implemented at signalized intersections or nearby those types of intersections. This includes conflicting attention demands which could cause confusion for the driver approaching the intersection. Okay. And the last thing I'll cover is, uh, phone outage communications. A board member asked the following questions regarding DTS and handy van phone outages. I'll cover one of them. Actually, cover one of them. Given the recent outage on September 3rd from 9:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. and additional outages from October 10th through October 12th, 2025, why did many riders not receive alternate contact number? So DTS's response to the question was, or is, during the phone outage that started on October 10th, which impacted the bus and handy van lines, the handy van riders were advised to contact Handy Van through their emergency phone line at 808-650-3021 for trip reservations and cancellations. Notices regarding the phone outage and emergency phone line were posted on OTS's estimated arrival application. Login is HTTPS double backslash EBA dot thebus dot org backslash. The Handy Van website is www dot thehandyvan dot org backslash. DTS also issued a press release and notified its Committee for Accessible Transportation Member Agency so that they could inform their clients. OTS also established a temporary backup call center for the Handy Van reservations using the 808-650-3021 phone number during the prior phone outage on September 3rd. Going forward, OTS is planning to continue to use the 808-650-3021 line as a permanent backup phone line for Handy Van reservations and cancellations. And I'll stop there and take questions.
Not yet.
Yep.
Thank you for that. Next is Councilmember Kia Aina.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. My name is Irene Lemos, and I'm the Constituent Services Coordinator to Councilmember Esther Kia Aina. She apologizes for not being here, but she wanted me to share the following updates. So Councilmember Kia Aina will continue to work with Boardmember Laura Burbage with regard to speed mitigation measures on Kahuhipa. Councilmember is not pleased with regard to Keahala Road because of the scheduling is not expected until later, and she would like to see if it can be expedited. She will be meeting with Laura regarding these roads. And then lastly, Councilmember has submitted her proposal to the Honolulu Charter Commission to rename the Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund to the Land Natural Resources and Historic Preservation Fund and to allow a portion of revenues to be used for historic preservation efforts. The current Clean Water and Natural Lands Funds are waiting to be used as of August 21st, 2025. The balance in the Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund was $37 million, and annual appropriations to the fund are approximately $8 million to $9 million. So when combined with the surplus, the annual allotment provides an excellent opportunity to use a portion of fund monies for historic preservation to preserve, conserve, and protect sites, buildings, objects, landscapes, and districts of historic significance. The link to her charter amendment proposal will be provided in the chat box. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mahalo. And now it's time for questions for all of those folks that just spoke. Mr. Sakamoto, I see you. Off you go.
Thank you, Chair. Question for concern for Representative Takura. I'm worried about the Medicare Medicaid issue with our next year for people trying to get insurance also for their private sector. As a Medicare person, I've been getting these test kits from my insurance company, and I'm blind. I can't use it. I called them up. I told them to cancel it. But I'm still getting these kits. So it's like a waste of taxpayers' money. You know, I can't use them. So I just want to know if something can be done to mitigate these insurance companies from wasting our taxpayer money sending kits and people don't use them, especially myself. It's just a waste. And then for the governor, I understand that we have a settlement for the students regarding emissions. And I'm worried about 2030, 2045, we have to get our deposit due. And I'm a fixed income disabled person, and others would have to pay outrageous prices for electric vehicles and such and such. That's worrying to me and how we're going to subsidize for those people who can't afford it. And for Andy Kawano, I appreciate your report about the Handy Van. Today I had my citizens for a fair eighty ride meeting in downtown Honolulu. Regarding the outage of the phone lines in October, Tracy Quello, President of Handy Van, said their outage was due to a water main break on Middle Street that took out their piped optic lines. They had a backup line dedicated if that happens again. But I mentioned to use Starlink so they can communicate with the general public and with their operators who have tablets as well as cell phone capabilities. So there was an open eye for them, and they're going to explore that. But regarding my stream, I called you last week Friday. The state has cleaned Kianaoli Road where I live last week, Thursday. Fantastic job. They come every so often. But my ditch next to my home is all overgrown, even though you can't see the guardrail. I know you told me to take a picture, but you know, I'm legally blind. So I reached out to Councilmember Kia Aina's office, talked to Irene to see if they can take a satellite picture so they can show it to Department of Facility Maintenance because it's easier to do it that way than having me trying to find somebody. But my concern to you also, for the city and the city council, how are you going to be able to get funding for emissions of new vehicles for your fleet, for the police, fire department, government vehicles when this mandate goes into effect in 2030 and 2045? Thank you.
Did you get all that?
With regard to the city, yes, I got all of that. And I would be stepping my bounds to respond on the funding question. I need to talk to DTS and some other folks and respond during the next meeting on the emission question because I'm not involved operationally there. Nor have I heard anything about it recently.
Thank you. And what was Esther's rep? Irene?
I will take that question back with Councilmember, but I haven't heard anything about that either. But I did speak with Donald regarding the his ditch and then the vegetation overgrowth. And so we submitted a riser to DFM Roads about that. So we're waiting to hear back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mo.
Yes.
Good for Andy.
Yeah, Laura.
So Andy, can you reiterate about the narrowing the road on Kahuhipa? And what is that for? Why?
So, okay, so have you driven through Kamaki Town?
Yeah.
Okay, so when they, as you approach Coco Head at the top, if you notice, they put in, they drew in lines, and they have parking, and they actually narrowed the direction of the traffic both ways such that, I guess theoretically, it slows down drivers so they don't drive as fast. So I think when they do complete streets on Kahuhipa, they're going to have lines for parking and another outer line for a bikeway, and then a more narrow driving line going both ways. Narrow lanes, the lanes get narrowed down. Personally, I don't know if it stops speeding, but I think for me personally, when there's a lot more bikes in those lanes going back and forth, coming in and out of driveways, I just got to be really careful.
Okay. And then the raised crosswalk, right? So DTS said that that's not a good idea?
Yes, they said their policy, and I think they work with state DOT as well, is that they don't place or build raised sidewalks nearby signalized intersections.
Wait, you're saying sidewalk. I'm talking about a crosswalk.
I'm sorry, crosswalks, raised crosswalks. They don't put them next to signalized intersections.
Right. So I was, I'd sent a map to Kia Aina in the middle of Kahuhipa, between Aula and Kahikili and Kahuhipa. There's no crosswalk in that whole long stretch. So somewhere in between there. And so that people crossing can get to the bus stops on the other side. And just coming in, trying to get in, trying to cross the road, but having to come out between cars. So having something of a, you know, a raised crosswalk would probably slow people down to some degree. So anyway.
Yeah, I'll look into that for you and report back. I know that DTS will do a traffic study before putting them in because I've talked to them about it in the past, but we'll get back to you as to whether or not a traffic study was done. And if it's in the queue, we'll get that done.
And if you could, when you're talking to DTS about that specific item, we're not talking about the stoplight at Aula. We're talking about where she just described. It's a 1,500 yard, you know, from that stoplight to Kahikili. So that's what she's talking about. And as I consider myself an old person, old people will slow down for a compressed lane, but younger folks don't. It's still a lane to them. So they just, if they're going to do a traffic study, then they should probably do a real one. Sorry, no offense. Can't, sorry. Kalamai. I mean no disrespect. Any other questions?
This is Kim Tomy. This is for Andy Kawano. In September, I suggested that Satellite City Hall enable disabled handicap, temporary handicap placards to be applied for and issued online. Do you know what the status is on that or if it's been followed up on or recommended to them?
You know, I apologize. I don't recall reporting on that one, and I'm going to have to check and then come back with a response. So online application of placards, right, for handicap?
Right, that you don't have to go. He was here.
Yeah, I remember the discussion, but I don't recall reporting on it. So I got to go check to find out what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Her question was about the Satellite City Hall being able to issue that temporary instead of turning it along.
Right. But you do the application process at home, right? And you're talking about just picking it up there?
Well, you can get it online, but yeah, not having to go in in person if you're disabled. Thank you. Where are you going to pick it up?
So ideally, being able to print one.
Well, we were just talking about what the ideal situation would be for somebody who needs one.
I'll look into that.
Until you've hurt yourself and you're temporarily disabled, it doesn't really come clear to you until you're having to limp and get stuff done like that. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to. Hi.
Trying to identify myself again, Rocky Kalahiva. We talked about Kahuhipa Street. Since September, I've been taking my great-grandson to school and Hia Elementary and picking him up. You either need to have a camera there by the school, by the park, but you need to have a raised sidewalk because people don't know what is 25 miles an hour. Haiku Road is a road that is not only at the shopping center, the school, the crosswalk is a danger. I'm so scared to have my grandson even go down to catch the bus. So you need to check into that. If you can't put a raised crosswalk, put some cameras there. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Auntie Rocky. Any other questions? New batch of representatives coming up. Senator Keho Kalole. Senator Awa.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Chair. Members of the board, members of the community. Elizabeth Tavake reporting on behalf of Senator Brentston Awa. Just a quick update. I know it's on the other side of the island, and it's not exactly Kanihoi, but we have wanted to invite the community anyways. November 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we're going to be having our one-year anniversary for the Haleiva Food Tree Project. As you may know, just like the Kahalou Food Tree Project, it was something that we were working on to combat CRB and the issues that we were having in the community. So if you're available, November 29th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we'll be out there. Another thing that we're working on today, we were out in Kahalou for the Kahalou Elementary drop for the Genki Balls out in Kahalou. Another, if you're looking, well, something to look forward to. We're also out there decorating, trying to put the Kahalou Food Tree Project in the Christmas spirit, decorating the ulu trees, the 70 ulu trees out there in Kahalou. After this meeting, I'm going to take a drive out there to see if they're working. There was other solar lights, so they may or may not be working. We shall see. Besides that, we're looking forward to December 6th, one of our favorite events of the community, the Kanihoi Christmas Parade. We're looking forward to it, and if there's any questions or concerns that the community may have for me to take back to Senator Awa, I'll take that with me. That's all for my report tonight.
Mahalo. Moving on to Representative Kitigawa. Representative Matayoshi. Representative Mike Lee. Okay, any questions for the record for the representatives and senators? Yes?
I have a concern for the record. Same, the Sakamoto, same thing with the emissions things. I hope the legislature would do something to make the people that did the comment over the summer of this year in regards to the emissions, that some subsidy will be given to those who can't afford it. And also, you know, we, Kanihoi used to have the best banana patches here. They called the Lukuparos Banana Patch on Nikiliki and Ho'ohomea Park. But now it's all abies trees. So I would like to know if the state legislature can do something to mitigate and bring it back our fruit trees to Kanihoi and grow our own food and not abies trees and abies of other plants. That's my concern. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other comments for the representatives? Elected officials seeing none? All right. Board business. This is the approval of the October minutes. Has anyone had a chance to see those minutes and make a motion for their acceptance?
There's some corrections, Chair.
Go ahead, Donald.
Yeah, thank you, Donald Sakamoto for record. I looked over the minutes. I believe, Richard, I think it was on page five. Yeah. City Concerns. City Concerns, I brought up about the September 3rd Handy Van or Transit Services phone, but as Andy just stated, it was between October 10th to 12th and this is October 11th to 13th. So I'd just like to change that for the record.
Thank you. Any other changes, recommendations? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept as amended?
Sakamoto, motions to accept as amended.
It's been moved. Seconded. I haven't taken a vote, so let's go ahead and just for fun, take a, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, so there's an abstention, abstention. Toma. Don't know, sorry. Next is committee reports and assignments. Any attended meeting reports? Go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, Sakamoto here. On October 20th, I changed, I attended the virtual Zoom meeting for the Charter Commission. And at the Charter Commission at 6:00 PM, I had a hard time getting into the Zoom link, so it was difficult. And there were some phone numbers, a number with a, a number to put into the access to meeting. So I brought that up to the commissioners, finally got in through a phone system. Then I told them about the PowerPoint presentation, if they do give one, as well as slide shows to make sure it's accessible for people who are blind like myself and others who are attending the meetings. And then they talked about spreadsheets and spreadsheets are wonderful for somebody can see, but for myself, if they can do it in an alternate format, like HTML would be great. I could read it on my talking software. I did attend the, on November 6th, I think it was the Ho'ohomea Park plan, and it was held at Women Committee College. A fellow president of Kanoe took me and it was a good forum, we had six exhibit tables, gave my input towards what accessibility is for the park. Also was interviewed by Paul Juice of KITV to give my comments about what the park should be and my quotes. Then on, I think it was, I attended the Emergency Preparedness Summit here at Women Committee College on the, I think it was on the 16th or 14th, 14th. And I learned a lot from this second summit. I want to express my concerns about accessibility for people with disabilities. More emphasis was, and they are cakey, but we have to remain that we have equal access for transportation to evacuate people, especially ones like myself and others. And, and the final thing was my Committee for Accessible Transp, not Committee for Accessible Transportation. Citizens for a Fair Day Ride, we had a meeting today on November, November 20th, 9:45 to 9:45. Department of Transportation Services representatives and Wal Transit Services for Bus, Handy Van, and Skyline. Big concern was the new scheduling system or reoccurring search system they use for scheduling rides for Handy Van. It's called Trapeze Pass System. On November 7th, 2014, I had an interview with the Manolo Morales concerning this back then, and this real time that they're using is, is not real to RT. I told him the article was really terrible and we are experiencing the same problems back then now with the phone lines being impacted for more than 30 calls. And this is an ADA violation from Department of Justice of my complaint I filed in 2019. The settlement was signed between US Justice Department of ADA Civil Rights with Honolulu Mayor Rick Brolangiate, Director Roger Martin of DTS, and Corporation Deputy Corporation Counsel on January 11th, 2022, specifying that they have five years to make sure that phone calls are answered on time and they make the new system. Right now, they're in the third, third year, so there's two more years. So I'm closely watching this because I keep in contact with my attorney at Department of Justice Civil Rights. So Andy, I hope the city will not get into trouble again for violation of Title II of the ADA for accessibility for phone service because it should be answered within three minutes, the agreement was. And right now, according to Department of Transportation Services, today I spoke to them, they're in violation. So I hope the city doesn't get whacked without a fine or anything. Try to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thanks for that committee report. Any other committee reports? What I'd like to do quickly is just run down the, the names of the committees and the names of the people on them. Let me know if you want to be off that committee or on another one. I'll pause in between each reading. Community Engagement Committee is Toma, Lamb, Bryant. Emergency Preparedness Committee, Karstensen, Flytel, Kitavis, Sakamoto.
Hi, this is Board Member Bryant. I think I should be off the Community Engagement. I don't think I've been on that committee for a while now.
Thank you. Education Committee, vacant. Transportation Committee, Lamb, Sakamoto. Military Affairs, Radke, Downing. Downing is off. Haiku Stairs, vacant. State Legislative, Toma. Environmental, Bryant. HPD Liaison. Karstensen, Sakamoto. Planning, Lamb. And Homeless slash Kahahale, Burbage, Bryant, Flytel, Hewitt. Okay. NCO and Toys for Tots, Toy Drive. Your neighborhood assistant will be collecting donated children's toys, new toy unwrapped at tonight's meeting. Oh. Sorry. If you'd like to donate, please bring your toys to this meeting. Can we, if we have toys to donate, can we bring them down to the NCO? Okay. And if we want to bring to the Marine Corps Base, can we bring there too? Thanks. Next regular board meeting is our, is on December 18th and that is our Winward Community College here at Halei Ahoe. And it is, the first part of the meeting is just Fire Department, Police, and Winward Community College and Marine Corps Base of Aieh. And after that, we, Vaena. What's that? Did you do? What is that?
Okay, just for the board's awareness, so they are doing renovation for this room starting the, during the springtime, which will be February, starting February. So the last meeting will be in here, will be in January, but we do still have another room available that we can use that's still going to be at this school. Just want to update you guys and it will be placed on the agenda. Yes, so we have it listed from the conference room 101 to 105, is what it says.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes?
Can, can I join you on your Committee for Military since you saw Donald's not there?
Sure.
Because I, I like the Marine Corps too.
Sakamoto.
And I know I sent you a text earlier, but can we discuss that later maybe? Because it's not on the agenda.
Christmas party?
Yeah.
Let's discuss it right now.
Okay.
We discussed it last meeting. We voted to participate in the Christmas parade, not the Christmas party. We're selecting the Christmas party here and I think Laura said you were going to help coordinate who's going to do what. Please come. It's just a nice chance to have a real short meeting and then we just grind and have a good time. Yeah, potluck. And yeah, you can't potluck from online, you have to come. That's right. One of the things, it's not on the agenda, but we did talk about it and voted on it last month, was to participate in the Kanoe Christmas Parade as a board. Are we still doing that? Laura says yes. My truck is all Hamajang, you don't want to use that thing. We've got to use a nicer truck. We, we can, yeah, we can use it. It's a baby truck. Okay. High Lux Toyota.
Chair, so the lineup has been, it's almost finalized, but they're.
They said we have till tomorrow.
Okay, they did talk to you. Okay, so we can probably make a combination for two vehicles.
Okay.
And then we need a 40-word narrative to go with that application.
A narrative about who we are and what they will say when we drive by?
Say by, yeah.
Okay.
No more than 40 because that's what the announcers have enough time.
Okay, I'll write that. I'll write that tonight. And the two, we'll have, we'll have two vehicles, two Hamajang trucks representing the Kanoe, Kanoe Neighborhood Board.
We'll just cover yours with Monstero or something.
Yeah, unless, unless, so two vehicles for sure. Do you have, are you, are you inputting with the Christmas parade? Are you the grand marshal?
No, I'm the vehicle coordinator, so I'm trying to find parking space for everyone before we start the parade.
We'll have two vehicles and I'll, I'll send you the, the Neighborhood Board spiel. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll send that tonight. Thank you.
And I'll send out an email for you to sign up if you're going to come and if you can bring decorations and all that for his Hamajang truck.
Thank you.
And for the potluck.
Okay, so we're in, it's happening. When is it? Once more? That's Saturday, right?
December 6th.
Okay. All right, our next meeting, as I just mentioned, will be a short meeting and party. Other than that, this meeting, I want to thank Vice Chair for covering for me when I wasn't here and then allowing me to have the, the gavel back. This meeting is adjourned.
It's, it's, whoa.